Town of Kensington, February fourteenth, town council meeting. We're going to start the meeting off with a moment of silence. I just want to bring a couple of people up for thoughts and prayers. I want to lift up Mayor Khaki Chantry of Garrett Park. Her sister has been in hospice care. And I know she's not very well, so Khaki's been with her since she's been admitted into hospice care. Also want to lift up the family of Hyattsville, of Hyattsville, Mayor Kevin Ward passed away on January twenty fifth. I didn't know Mayor Ward, but I had met him in passing at the Mayor's Association meeting, so definitely. He was a young man and I'm sorry to hear that he had passed away. And I also want to lift up County Councilmember Will Juwondo. Councilmember Juwondo was a victim of a very disgusting and offensive racial slur and a Zoom bombing. And I know he was pretty shaken by it, having heard him the next day on a, on another council meeting. So I just want to lift him up as well. I think it's just horrible, the things that people do. I guess in the name of free speech, but anyway, so please, please think about him. Is there anyone else? Okay, if we can just bow our heads for a minute. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we need to have the approval of the minutes. Council, you received the minutes. I did not see any corrections, so if someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from the town council meeting of January tenth.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the mayor and town council. Just number one is I'd like to acknowledge that the town provided the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department with a four thousand dollar grant to assist in the purchases of new computers for their administrative staff. So we're very fortunate that we're able to put grant funds into our, into our annual budget so that we can do these things for particularly our nonprofits here and, and the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department has had a difficult time with some fundraising since the pandemic, and so they were in a, in a jam, so glad we were able to help them. Number two, the town alcohol licensing. I think who's here, Ron Price? I see Ron. Kathy Durbin is, there's Kathy. Kathy, do you want to just introduce the people that you have here tonight?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Kathy Durbin. I'm the Director of Alcohol Beverage Services. It's nice to see everyone and happy Valentine's Day. Ron Price is on the, I think he made it on the phone. He was having problems with audio. And Ron Price is our regulatory manager and compliance manager for alcohol beverage services. So he's been working with Matt on the subject. And then our new ABS Licensing Regulation Education Division Chief, Amy Samantha is on as well. So I just want to introduce Amy. She's in her car, I think.
Well, I appreciate you all coming out tonight to speak to us. You know, the reason we, you know, had reached out is that we had reached our eighth license in the aggregate, I believe, of seven licenses that are available to us. And we have learned that there is another business that would like to pull a license and is unable to because we've, you know, reached that number. So I know Delegate Carr has, is working on a bill for us in order to increase that number, but we thought we'd have you here tonight to maybe, um, we understand that there's the county has thirty-two different licenses, alcohol licenses, is that correct? And we right now only have eight, I believe, that we allow, so I don't, I don't turn around another bill, but I, I think we're probably going to have to visit this again, you know.
Yeah, some of these licenses are, like, it's really funny how even the Class D beer and wine off-premise license years ago was considered a saloon license and only a few people had it. Now we have over two hundred Class D licenses in Montgomery County because they allow for the, the beer tastings, the craft beers. You know, it's just a more interactive, engaging license for a small business, and so they've become very prevalent in the county. So it's, it's weird. Every time I think we're going to get rid of one of the licenses, or maybe we have too many. People say, I want to do something special. So we have like three different types of performing arts licenses for the various different sizes of communities, like the Fillmore size down to the Alney size as well. And so, and the Vis Arts has a license that now four different organizations have applied for, including BlackRock. So it's been, it's exciting. But we just had a bike shop apply the other day, believe it or not, for a license. So you know, the, the board liked their ideas and their, their little kind of nuanced licenses. So when we say we have that many licenses, a lot of them are just kind of small. Really kind of intimate licenses that people want to get, like for, we have an art walk license, those kinds of things. Our latest license, just to let you know, we thought it was really, I'll just, just, it's pretty exciting, actually. Pre-COVID, we created a marketplace license, and I'm not sure I even had a chance to tell you all about this license, but it seemed really super sexy at the time, and then COVID hit and everybody could carry around alcohol everywhere. So now it's, you know, creating those spaces, safe spaces for consumption only. So like a developer can apply if they'd like for a downtown center, or the Bethesda Urban Partnership, we're kind of tweaking a little bit this year for them because they want a streetery, they want to keep their model, and if they can continue to close off that street, it's an annual license and it's consumption only. So the businesses within that parameter can sell food and alcohol and people can go out to the tables and partake. So it's a, it's more of a consumption-only license. We modeled it after a license in Virginia, and then they liked what we did and they changed theirs and upgraded theirs. So it's, it's really a an exciting thing to watch the, the businesses thrive and the communities change a little bit, but to be able to create those licenses that work for a while. You don't have to keep going back and changing them. So hopefully that's the last change for Marketplace, but I think it's going to be a fun addition to Montgomery County. But I'm happy to talk to you about it anytime.
Yeah, I mean, this is my concern is that, you know, as you add licenses, you know, what, what business opportunity are we missing? And, you know, somebody, I mean, I know when a distillery looked at coming into the town, you know, we didn't have a license for that, and no one had thought about, you know, something like that.
Yeah, and we have, we've created a lot of opportunity for distilleries, breweries, and even the urban-type wineries to be able to partner with local licenses, which never happened before, and that's happened over the last few years. I like the ability to do that, so then these businesses don't only have statewide licenses, they have local licenses as well, so they're part of our community. It's not so detached that it's just a statewide license. They come in and do whatever they want, and then we don't have any real relationship with those businesses. So it's worked out beautifully, and I think we have six or seven different types of licenses that can accompany the manufacturer licenses now.
Counsel, do you have any questions? No questions?
I guess, if no one's going to come in, I guess I'll just start. And I'm wondering if we can, given what you just asked about Tracy, and just, we may be missing some opportunities with these licenses, but knowing that we have demand for it now, does it make sense that we just, we, we advocate or support passing Delegate Carr's legislation and then come back and amend it next year to open up the classes as we do a little bit more analysis with you? It seems like it's pretty urgent if it's going to get considered. So I'm just wondering if that's the right path, or do you recommend we wait and then know what we really want and, and push for it next year? I just, I worry that we'll miss a whole year of businesses having this if they want it.
Right, and I, I understand that, but I'm a little, where time is kind of pressing us right now regarding, you know, making sure that we can get this passed this year. I think Al, Delegate Carr was going to be on the call, but he hasn't called in yet. It would be nice to know, you know, what kind of because we need to do it publicly, you know, to sit there and say, oh, we're going to adopt all these licenses, or, oh, we're going to just maybe just go under the county and not even have, you know, special licenses for the town. I'd be a little concerned about doing that without more proper public input.
Right, I was actually suggesting that we have, that we just move forward with what's already been approved.
Just going up to the twenty?
Yeah, up to the twenty, under the same classes that we've already approved.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood that.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry, I wasn't clear. And then amending it next year, asking for an amendment to the bill next year, maybe or the legislation to open it up to more as we do more research, if we want to do a streetscape or whatever, a streetery, excuse me.
Right. Counsel, any other thoughts? Connor, Darren?
No, I guess just as a reminder, Kathy, so there are all of these classes of licenses, but there are also additionally like add-ons, like permits that can be added on to certain ones. So
Yes.
Can you just remind us of how that works? Because there's, you know, the beer tastings permits and, they, you know, just want to be reminded.
Yeah, so there's the different permits. Some of them have changed a little bit this year due to COVID, so we changed our processes, but for the most part, if that license, there have been people that have come before the board and they've, for instance, there was somebody that did oppose the license, for instance, something like that happened. So they, they applied for a limited license and they cannot have the add-ons. Doesn't have, I've only known that once to happen, but for the most part, the add-ons are, so if there's a special event that's going on and they want to extend their license out and they have approval of all the entities that need to approve, DEP or whoever it might be to extend that license out for a special event, they can just use their license to extend it instead of bringing in a one-day license holder. And that would extend their property, which is for us better in a way because they already have been trained and they already know the alcohol laws and they understand what they can and can't do. So that's an example of one of the things. And then also the carryout by the drink is a special permit right now for the beer, wine and liquor on-premise restaurants. That will, it's sunset till twenty twenty-three, and that's as a result of the COVID. So people can, our customer can order food and a drink or a bottle of beer closed in a container, those kind of things. So they're approved administratively, but they're approved during the license as well, through the Board of License Commissioners hearing. So there's lots of them. We can actually have a summer session or do whatever you all want. I'm happy to field a lot of questions. In the meantime, I'll send you the link so that you can see the breakout. Just to get a, you know, a big picture, but happy to go down deep with you and talk about what some of the businesses can do and, and how they're, they're still limited.
We don't have any restrictions on how many one-day licenses, though, that are available, right?
Nope, nope.
Okay, okay. Because I know we pull a few of those every year.
Yeah, so we've given the businesses a little bit more flexibility, especially because of COVID and due to COVID, to if, if their landlord permits to go a little further out, like on occasional Saturdays, or if there's going to be an event that, that happens and, and they get, you know, all the permissions they need to get. And all of those permissions that you're talking about that we've discussed, they're usually temporary, so they, they just approve for that day, yeah.
Okay, are they still allowing off-sales for drinks because of COVID? I mean, can you still go to a restaurant and get a carryout?
Yeah, if you, and we, we approve that permit online. So we have, I think, at this point, a hundred and seventy businesses. There were four hundred businesses during COVID that had applied for this. And it's free, it's just, we, we want to know who's doing it and talk to them about. A lot of the businesses that are, that, that remain doing it, they're approved, they don't necessarily sell drinks to go with their food because the winners really are margaritas and those types of packaged drinks, not a rum and coke to go. People really weren't interested. And now there's the open container laws that are in effect, so you can't rock out with your rum and coke and walk down the street with it. Or, you know, get in a car and drive. We don't want any of those things to happen, but there are bottles of wine sold with two dinners, for instance. It's quite popular, those kind of things. So the winners are really the closed containers or manufactured sealed containers, or like margaritas in a sealed container.
Okay, okay. Al, I'm glad to see you here. We were talking about the bill that you've passed and sticking with, you know, what we discussed, which was the twenty licenses, and then having Kathy come back this summer and looking at going back maybe one more time to to look at the other licenses that we do not allow, or, you know, possibly just going with the county law. So, and not having to, to do this every other year. So, but that's to be determined. So, um, Counsel, I just want to make sure, so Delegate Carr knows that we're going to stick with the bill that he had forwarded, forwarded us today, is that correct? Which just takes the aggregate from eight to twenty? And don't all speak up at once.
Time, that, that would be what I would do, but, but I agree with possibly revisiting even greater liberalization next year.
Yeah, I do feel like that somebody's going to come up to us and want to do some great idea, and we'll have to sit there and say, sorry, we don't do that license. And, and so I, I don't want to miss out on something that's good for our, you know, our residents or, you know, or is exciting for our residents and, you know, good for a business to. Okay.
So do, yeah, good evening, Mayor Herman. Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, sorry, I missed the first part of the conversation, but I, I just wanted to just set expectations for the bill. Because as you know, the, these things are very time-sensitive in the General Assembly. And if, you know, if this bill had come back from drafting like last Thursday, we would have been in much better shape than we are now because the bill came back today. We're in a really tight spot because there is Alcohol Day. That's the day when all the alcohol bills get heard, which is coming up on this Monday. And because this is a late-filed local bill, we still have the delegation has to vote to approve it as late filed, and then we would still have to have a bill hearing, and that all would normally happen before Alcohol Day, and it gets referred to the Economic Matters Committee. So I am not sure if the timing is going to work for this session, but I haven't given up on that, but I just want, wanted to let you know that the, you know, the timing is, is not looking that great, but will be even better prepared next year in case it comes to that.
Okay. Well, I was talking to the owner of Los Chorros, who is friends with the, the restaurant that was looking to get, you know, the ninth, a ninth license, which we can't offer. And he was certainly hoping that we would be able to get that done this year, if possible. So you know, do what you can. I know it's, you know, I think most of this stuff's done on Zoom. I don't know if it makes it easier. Or I, I know I was on the, on a, you asked me to be on a bill with, or to attend a meeting for a bill, and you know, it was, I think, a thirty-second meeting, so everybody's here, everybody voted and everybody left. So I think you know, hopefully something like that could happen.
Hopefully, so definitely in theory it could work that way, but I will certainly do my best.
Well, Al, is there anybody we can be reaching out to additionally, you know, as the mayor and council to try and you know, make sure they're fully educated on why we want this and apologize for why it's a late bill, kind of go through it and, and help maybe make this go efficiently and happen in the cycle?
Yeah, thank you for that great question. So I, I don't think there's really anything you can do, you know, I don't know. You know, Kathy or Amy might have some insights into this as well, but it's, you know, I think it just kind of boils down to a timing thing. So, you know, I have to talk with my colleagues to see if there's some way we can pull a rabbit out of the hat and make it happen. But, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's an issue with, you know, the merits of the bill or or anything like that. It just, it just simply boils down to the timing.
Well, can't, just out of curiosity, has this ever been done out of order where Alcohol Day happens first and then come back and check these boxes later? Is it required that it happen?
Never want to say never. There's just a lot more hoops that have to be jumped through because, you know, all, I didn't mention it also, Bill has to also go through this other committee called the Rules Committee to get approved before it can go to the Economic Matters Committee that has the Alcohol Day. So, you know, it's, it's not impossible, but it's just, you know, becomes very difficult.
So if it does not make it into Alcohol Day, is there still a process or opportunity to get it done this legislative session?
I will try my best. It is, you know, possibly going to be an uphill battle, you know, but it's, you know, I'm not going to say it's impossible.
You know, this is probably one of the easier bills. It doesn't take a lot of thought.
It's a very simple bill.
Yeah, I mean, you're going from eight to twenty. It means more money for the state, more money for the county, more money for the town, economic development. I mean, I, I mean, I understand the system. I do understand the system. I'm not, it's just more of this is, this is the the concern of citizens with government is sometimes we just can't deal with something that should be easy.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, and I agree.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, Kathy, we, we may be back next summer for, you know, increasing the aggregate if Al's not being able, able to pull the rabbits out of the hat, but I'm, I'm going to hope that he can. So
Whatever we can do, whatever we can do to support, we will, and if, if nothing else, we'll definitely meet in the summer and talk about options and, you know, some of the things that you want to see in, in Kensington. I think that you'll still be a part of the process. It'll be, it's great. We have a really great Board of License Commissioners that you know, wants to hear input from the community whenever a bill, a person comes up to apply for a license and be qualified. So it's a great process and would love you to be more a part of it. And I would miss you all, though, if I didn't come back every year.
Well, I, we would miss you as well, but I, I do feel like, you know, we've got, I think, our first past alcohol in two thousand and seven, which is, you know, we're on, coming up on the fifteen-year mark, and I, I, I think we've we should have this by now and not have to keep, keep going back, so.
Gotcha. Yeah, no problem.
Does anybody outside the council have any questions that don't want to, about what we're trying to do? Okay, I don't see any hands. So Kathy, thank you, and Ron and Amy for coming tonight, and Al, thank you for coming in and and letting us, you know, giving us the update. Thank you. All right, so we're going to move down to number three, which is the one oh three eleven Summit Avenue hearing. It's a variance hearing. Counsel, you received information on the variance from the staff today. So Matt, do you want to start?
Leave Christie's here and Kevin, they are. We have a variance request on behalf of Christie and Kevin Jones of one oh three eleven Summit Avenue for an addition on the south side of the property. There's actually two variances. One is to encroach three feet into the ten-foot side yard setback. And the other is the proposed addition would be nearer than fifteen feet to the existing dwelling at forty eleven Prospect Street. Christine, Kevin, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, sure. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, everyone, for including us on the agenda today. This is a unique situation for us because we do have what we consider a narrow lot, roughly fifty feet wide. And it's, you know, a rhombus shape, and so it just kind of creates this unique challenge where we would like to add some width to our house in a very tasteful way. But the way our house is shaped, it just allows us to go just a short amount of feet wider in the front, as you can see with the plan. And that, I'm just assuming that everybody can see the plan or has a copy of the plan. And then in the back, we can go out a little bit further. In the gap that you see there is because we have an air-conditioning unit and gas meter there, which would be a heavy lift to move around. But in the front of the house, we want to put some office space. We're both, even post-COVID, going to be working remotely and want to create that space. And then in the back is to create space for my parents who will likely be staying with us or moving in at some point. Part of why we are asking for this variance is, number one, it's within Montgomery County guidelines that we were grandfathered into, you know, in nineteen fifty-four. So it's not certainly violating anything there, but certainly it's not within town guidelines at the moment. Beyond that, we've, we've looked into an accessory unit to put in the back of the house, which in talking to a contractor, that seemed like it'd be more of an eyesore for our neighbors and seemed a little bit obnoxious. And again, what we're proposing here, again, is tasteful, similar to the driveway that we put in last year. And we think that it's not asking for too much, but again, we know it's not within guidelines, you know, of the council and our neighbors that border us and who would, including the, the next-door neighbors who would be most impacted, impacted by this are very supportive of our proposed plan. Have I missed anything here?
No, I, I do have a question. Matt, you said there was a second variance for fifteen feet within the, our neighbor's house. Are you sure about that? Because I'm pretty sure they're ten feet off the property line.
Our zoning map currently has the property at between twenty-one and twenty-two feet, forty eleven Prospect Street from from the lot, from your dwelling unit. And the proposed variance would bring that to twelve to thirteen feet.
So there, it doesn't square with what I, I, I think, but huh, okay. Then they must be like significantly close to the property line, then, more closer than the ten feet.
Yeah, and then part of this is also just for anyone on the call who doesn't know, like, we're one of the houses, like, one of the few houses that is on the main road of Summit Avenue leading up to Knowles, and, you know, so it's, it's in line with the houses across the street from us. You know, in terms of the width, and we're just, we're one of the skinnier lots along with a few others that are rhombus-shaped, you know, along Summit Avenue. So hoping to, to add to the aesthetics and to the curvy hill on Summit Avenue as well.
And you said that the resident on Prospect doesn't object, is that correct?
And they're actually newer neighbors in that green house right on the corner, and so we've had conversations with them, and they're, they're very supportive. Because that whole, it's, it's kind of a side yard where, again, you have an air-conditioning unit, a gas meter, it's not really being used with the exception of a failed garden, I guess, that we, we put there during COVID. But there's, there's certainly space there, and again, I, I feel like they'd be more impacted if we were to put some accessory unit in the back of the house, which would, again, just not align well with what I would imagine they would like, and it's something that we could do within guidelines.
So you don't think taking these, these two So you don't think taking these, these two additions on the side and putting them in the back? You think that, that is worse? Is that correct for the, for your, the neighbor?
Just in terms of having an accessory unit, which again, we could go a lot larger. We don't need something. Crazy or anything like that. Just enough space where we could put in an extra room and in a bathroom. That's handicap accessible in, in the back. There is really what we're looking for, which is why we would just like, you know, to, to go out. Just, you know, about three extra feet back there is what we're asking.
There, there's incentive for us to build back because it's farther away from the road and the noise, but. If you look at our house, it looks like super long and skinny when you're driving up. So. It just looks awkward to us and we feel like it, the additional width on, on the front would, would actually. Make it look like, you know, oh, just better, I guess would be the word.
And these are one story additions. Is that correct?
Right now that one story, I mean, certainly there's flexibility to go up. We would do that, but that we have, that's not what we've talked to the contractor about it. But I don't know how that works with the variance, if we should be having that discussion now or just focusing on. One level.
I would, Matt, I think if they decided to go to, if the variance was granted, that wouldn't make a difference. Is that correct?
No, because the various requests is for the footprint of the foundation essentially.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think, I would think especially for the front one, we'd want to go to just so it made the house consistent.
A little bit more balanced.
Yeah.
Yeah. Council, do you have any questions?
I got, well, I don't know how to shape my question yet. I will say this much. I, I can sympathize. I have a fairly long house at the. Due to historic preservation in the county, you know. But, you know, also charge was looking at whether or not this meets the three. Tests for variance. One of which is that it's not detrimental to neighboring property or the community as a whole. And I know you guys have stated it and I absolutely take your word for it. But I would feel uncomfortable doing so without actually a letter from the neighbor, because what happens if that's not? The case, right? And then the new neighbor comes in and says, I, I don't know what they were talking about. Like, we absolutely don't want that. So first and foremost, I'd be uncomfortable passing a variance without. Letters from your neighbors that are, you know, nearby that this would impact. And if you guys are thinking about doing second story, I'd talk with your neighbors about that too, right? It just makes for better neighbors. I, the other one, you know, one of the other. Variance test is, is that the minimum necessary amount to overcome the condition? You know, I began, I don't really, it sounds like a home office and maybe a bedroom, but you know. Matt, so we're, this is three feet into the side yard setback?
Correct. Yeah. So the, the front addition is, would be a variance of three feet. We just went with three feet, even though the rear is proposed to.
Yep.
We're, we're classifying it as one addition as opposed to two separate additions on the south side of the lot.
Okay. I'm looking at it now. So the other thing I'm looking at right now is MC Atlas. If you guys haven't been on it, aren't familiar with it, it's just. The county's lot lines, right? And how things are situated. And I will say. One thing that is not any fault of your own, nor necessarily your neighbors, is the fact that your neighbor's property. Seems to be sitting about one foot off the property line, the legal boundary. If you look at MC Atlas, so that the, you know, the one part of the code that talks about the spacing in between two properties. You know, that's not your doing. I mean, somebody's, in these houses, I think their house is like 1906 and your house is like 1903. So this happened a long, long time ago, but that house, the, the 411, 411 Prospect. You know, it is situated in the top left corner of a, you know, of a probably 10,000 square foot lot. But that top left corner is, you know, one or two feet from your property line as well. So here's what I would say, if, if we, you know, voting tonight without letters from your neighbor, I would vote against it. If you come back and this is the frustrating part of government, because now you got to come back to another meeting, right? But out of respect for the other neighbors, I'd like to make sure that, that, you know, they are okay with it, just to get over that third question. I'll, I'll, that's it. I'll pause the rest of my comments, see if anybody else has something.
I'll just come in. I, I think I would. Side with Connor on this and that, that would be my discomfort with voting on this. If there's no letter. No, no one here, I believe, a neighbor of yours representative, unless they are, it'd be great to hear from them. But, you know, in all of these variance hearings that we've had before, there's always been the neighbor having submitted a letter or being there in support. So I would just echo Connor's discomfort, but if and when you go back to the neighbor, if this doesn't pass. And you consult with them, I would just recommend asking them about the ADU too. Is that something, you know, if that was a, an alternative that they would support or. You know, if you, if you end up having to go that route, probably good to have that conversation as well. If that's, if that's what you ultimately have to do.
Sure. And, and to do that, Nate, would we have to, to get their support? I mean, obviously to be neighborly, we would want to, but if we don't really have a choice, is that something we would need to get? Their support on it's within the guidelines of Montgomery County and the town.
So I don't think it's a requirement to get a letter from the neighbor, but for me to support. A variance to the exception, I, I would, I would need to see that the neighbors support it.
Sure. For the accessory unit though, you would mention.
Oh, for the accessory unit?
Yeah, like I don't think that we.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Within guidelines, although it would be the neighborly thing to do. You know, to, you know, to make sure that they understood what we were doing. I, I don't know that we would. Need for them to.
No, you don't think you would need it, but you may find out they prefer that. You might find out they prefer an ADU over your building right next to the house, right?
Sure.
Have a conversation. Yeah.
So just, just Matt, I've been out there with a tape measure before. I'm pretty sure there's 26 feet between their house and ours. Currently, so I can, I can check that again when it's light out and not freezing cold.
Yeah, our zoning map, I mean, obviously it's not, it's not a building location survey, but it's showing 21 to 22 feet. So that's, that's what we have to go by until we're provided a building location survey. So we're still looking at two variances and.
Okay.
That's what we set it up.
But, okay, just, just from the comments we've received so far. We're pretty confident we could get a letter from them. So should we just table this and then come back in March or do we have to like reapply?
You don't have to reapply for, I don't think for the variance. But yeah, I think getting a letter and then coming back in March would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
Any other council members that we should hear from first?
Yeah, Bridget, Darren, did you want to provide any feedback?
I'll start and. I, I, I don't want to lead you down a primrose path regarding the. Approval by the neighbor, meaning that would not necessarily mean that I would support this. When I look at the code. It talks about an irregular shaped lot, topography. And, and things like that. And, you know, my lot is 50 feet wide. It's 150 feet deep. Every lot on Farragut Avenue is that width and depth. And so. I, I know that there are certainly different sized lots throughout town, some bigger, some smaller. But. At first blush, I don't see the. The basis for this variance. Based on irregular shape or topography.
Darren, I can quickly elaborate on that. So. Our lot is 50 feet wide, but it's 168 long on one side and 165 on the other. It, it's, it's not a rectangle. It's canted. Actually, a favorite way, but it, it, it's, and every lot on Summit has that. The rest of the town of Kensington, you guys have perfect rectangles and that, that angling of the lots on Summit. Means that our houses can't be as wide within the, the existing guidelines.
And I, I, I hear that. I just. You know, what I have are two kind of back of the envelope sketches of, of the proposed addition. Our code allows you, I, I, I see that you go at the back of your house within 10 feet and 18 feet. And actually those are perfectly, those comply with our existing side yard setbacks. If you were narrow or if you're eight or seven feet. Our code allows you to continue that intrusion with a hundred, with a 650 foot addition off the back of the house. When we went from the county. Seven or eight feet side yard setbacks to 10 feet, it was for the, the idea of, of open space, space between houses. And the addition that you're proposing, particularly because it's in the front of the house. At least gives the appearance of less space between the houses than, than our code requires. And so. I, I look at that and I say, well, okay, let's look at the variance procedure requirements and, you know, which one, which boxes do we text? Check. I hear your point about it's a rhombus or whatever that shape is from geometry, but it's basically a rectangle to me. And, and so I don't think we get out of the variance process by saying that it's. It, it's a difference of, you know, three feet on 160 feet length. So I, I'm not saying I, I wouldn't support it if you came back. With your neighbor supporting it, but I, I don't know that would be enough for me. And I'm only one of four, but I, I just want to, I want to make sure we don't lead you to give you false assurances.
We appreciate that. Thanks, Darren.
Can I, my, okay. Tracy helped set this up with some questions, but. The rear, I, I get it. Outside of just having a really long house, because after a while you get used to it. What about the, because you guys have a significant amount of rear yard space. What about going backwards and doing your additions off the rear? Why are you, what's avoiding, keeping you from, from looking at plans like that?
A, a part of it's just the aesthetics of just giving the house a little bit of width. Which again aligns with our neighbors across the street, which again, I know aren't part of the town, but. So, so that's one part of it. And just. Space that's not being used on the side yard are the, the people that lived here before. I'm not even sure if they ever lived here. I mean, there's. Big concrete, almost like helicopter pad looking. Concrete that's out there right now. And so that, that is a place where, you know, our kids play and things happen. So that's part of it, certainly. So, so we could, so again, we thought about putting an accessory unit. Back there. It's just when looking at that, you know, it, it takes up, you know, a lot of the yard space. And again, we were just looking to, to, you know, extend on the side to, to give our house some width and curb appeal, especially in the front. And then beyond that, you know, use spaces not, not being used. And I think that if we went to the back, it, it would start to get a little bit more. Obnoxious in my opinion, from what I saw with the contractor and what we talked about.
And just because it's, it's not covered here at all, but that side of the house is just a giant long hallway that runs from the front door to the back door. So anything that we were to build off of it, like needs to be wide enough to be its own space. Cause you, you can't, you can't really steal from a hallway that you need to walk through. So, but perhaps in the back we could, but, but not on the front and.
Yeah.
So I don't see how we could do smaller than that on the front and have it actually make sense.
Okay. I mean, again, this is just beneficial because I, I don't know your house. I just, oh, I'm, I'm looking at Google Maps, which. I find to be fairly accurate to keep you from going out in the cold. It's saying the distance between your house, what I determine or what I believe to be the closest point is like 25 feet. So pretty close to what you're saying, which is like the, it looks to be almost like a bay window structure off the rear of your neighbor's home. Okay. But at the very least, you know, just to continue, I, I, you know, I would like to just see something from your neighbors. I am, you know, I will tell you where I am right now. I, I think part of it, the distance between the two structures. I would say, you know, in my opinion is based on the placement of the house, your neighbor's house and back in 1908, which you didn't have any control over. I, you know, I would be fine with a variance there. I'm struggling with the side yard setback, our 10 foot setback. Only because there are other ways to do the addition. It, you know, I, I just don't know if it. Meets each of the tests that are within our code. And, and I will be honest, I, I would love to get you to yes, because I, the sheer, I gotta choose my words carefully. Bureaucracy that we went through on our house that resulted in we've got, you know. A, a house longer than yours, but we, and we have almost two lots, but we are not permitted because we're historic, we're not permitted to go in the side yard. So I, I'd love to get there. But I am struggling with the side yard setback, just because I don't know that it passes that test.
Thank you.
I will add to that because I.
I just wanted to mention that Kevin had to go pick up my daughter. So. He realized the time and he ran out of the house. So.
No problem.
You have just me now.
Okay, we won't take it personally.
We thought, I thought he was going to measure again.
No, we looked at the time and we're like, oh gosh, yeah.
I, I, I will add to what Connor said about the side yard and, and the historic, the pre, you know, code construction. We had a. Well, it started off being a variance on Prospect where the house we thought was three feet from the property line. Of, of, the, the, the neighbor's house was three feet from the property line. And to me, that. That was a unique feature that I was willing to take into account in deciding whether to grant a variance. And, and because, you know, you bought your house. You didn't really buy a house dependent on how close your neighbor's house. Was built long before we even considered side yard setbacks. So, you know, it's not that I'm close to it. I, I, I think we just, we, we need more information. But, you know, as one of four members, I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm not optimistic about this one.
Bridget, did you want anything to add?
I, I think, you know, everything that could be said is said, and I'm going to defer to the other members. It seems like there's a couple hurdles here.
Okay. All right. Well, so you're going to go back and see if you can't get something in writing from your neighbor. Check the, the distance between the houses to confirm that and, and then come back hopefully in the March meeting. I think the, it might be helpful to come back also with maybe a drawing of having the. Addition in the back as an option. I think that's. In case the variance doesn't pass, particularly on maybe on both. We'll see how that goes.
Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. Really appreciate.
Let me just.
You're in, hearing us out.
Sure. Darren, go ahead.
No, I, I guess I just want to. Throw out a bit of caution that, you know, I think we have to evaluate a variance based on the terms of the variance. And I, I don't want to get into a practice of having people come before us and say. We could bu- build this monstrosity. And I'm not saying that's what you've talked about doing, Christie. I'm, I'm just saying that, that, that I don't want to put us in a posture of. Such humongous ADU or this addition off the back that would be even worse. So please give us the variance on the side. You know, I, I was around when we went to 10 feet. I heard loud and clear that this value placed on open space and, and, you know, green space between buildings. And, and I just don't want to give people a, like an incentive to threaten to build something. And again, Kristen, not saying this is you guys. I'm just saying, I don't want that to be the measure that we evaluate a variance against. I want it to be. According to the code, are there, you know, irregular shapes and topographies or other features that, that. Merit a variance and then is the variance the, the minimally intrusive that we. Can approve.
Sure. Yeah. And it was probably more my personal opinion in terms of being an eyesore when we talked about what an accessory unit. You know, could look like back there. you know, could look like back there. In just, in looking at the, when you see the, the back area, you know, we're surrounded by a huge shed really close to our house on one side, a huge shed really close, I mean, that we're all grandfathered in. And then the backyard that backs up to our yard, there's a huge shed there, then there's a huge shed that are all really, really close to our property. So we're kind of, there's not a lot of green space to begin with. I wouldn't say so much on the side yard that we're asking about, but then in a lot of the other surrounding areas where we are. So, and we don't have a huge shed or a huge unit or anything that is really close, you know, to our fence and close to the property line. But again, we're surrounded by houses that we're grandfathered in.
So I guess as you come back, I would want to add a third, you know, question to that. Because I certainly appreciate you might not want to build an addition where you look out on somebody's non-conforming sheds. And so I would be interested in knowing that aspect of it as well.
Okay. Again, thank you, everyone, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Kristi.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to the number four, which is the variance on 3906 Washington Street.
Sure, Ellen Mitchell and the Ackmans are here to request a variance for 3906 Washington Street, which is to replace an existing one-story addition on the rear of the property with a two-story addition with a basement to remain in the existing or slightly smaller footprint. Ellen, if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Hi, everyone. So yes, we are hoping to replace an existing one-story over basement addition in the rear of the house with a new two-story over basement rear addition. The current addition is flush with the main part of the house on the west side of the property line and extends about three and a half feet to the east. We've already gotten feedback from Historic and they requested that the new addition step in slightly from the, the main part of the house. So that's what we're proposing to do, which would make it less wide than the existing addition, but still slightly over into the side setback on the west side. The, the owners have received letters of support from both of the adjacent properties. We are, so again, just to kind of summarize, we're making it less wide than it is existing. The depth would be the same, and we're also trying to kind of match the, the character of the house a little bit more than the current addition does.
And I'm sorry, have you, have you been through HPC already? And that's, have they approved the?
We have, we've done the hop process and they, they support, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, comments?
Could we get Matt's summary?
Okay. Matt?
I may not know, I've read it, but Matt, but just your recommendation.
The existing addition was actually through Office of Zoning and Hearing, was approved by variance by the county in 1988. The town had different side yard setbacks at that time, so it did not come before the town. So if the council was to take a position on this in favor of it, a Office of Zoning and Hearing Appeal would still need to be made by the applicants to the county. But subsequently, they'll want to know what the council believes on our end before they make a decision. And again, the, the biggest issue that we faced when it was first brought before us was the sum of the two side yards. They still need to equal 20 feet if the addition is below 650 square feet and they exceed that. Although they're requesting a one and a half foot encroachment on the west side of the property, the east side of the property remained, I believe, 15, I can't read the drawing, it's a little too small, but it was 15 feet. So they met the 20 foot sum on the two side yards.
Yeah, I think it's actually, we're back to 17 and a half feet.
Is that with the?
The little. Oh, and then I'm sorry, and then, and then there's a two foot.
On the east.
Fifteen and a half on the east side.
That's the projection, the two foot.
Yes, there's a projecting bay on the east side.
Okay.
Yes, I have a quick question, Matt, for you, is that I think the lots of the west is vacant, right?
Correct, so the Almonds own the lot, which is directly to the west of the property. It's a vacant lot, it does meet the county's standards for a buildable lot. However, the, the, the front lot is less than 50 feet. It has a pretty good depth and the Almonds did provide a letter of support for the property. And then there's no issue on the east side with the car property and they provided a letter of support as well.
No, and, and I think I generally support this. I just was curious if there's any concern that we'll run into the same issue of the previous variance hearing, where there's going to be, you know, less than 15 feet between houses if they end up wanting to build on that vacant lot. Something in the future, are we going to run into issues?
It's possible, if, like I said, they meet the minimum requirement on that vacant lot to build. If they were to build a property, it is possibility that there is an issue with the near the 15 feet requirement within our code.
We're already, already going to have that with this house, because the main house not being renovated.
Oh yeah, you're right, you're right, yeah, because it already.
Yeah, and, and as Councilmember Bartram noted before, we've run into the situation before on Prospect Street, where the existing house was located, I believe it was five feet from the property line or pretty close to that. And the new home could not meet the 15 foot minimum, so we would most likely take that into consideration of the property's building.
Yes, thank you.
Darren, any comments?
No, I guess I'm curious why the, there's an Office of Hearings and Appeals. But why is that process being triggered? Is that because it's below seven or eight feet?
The applicant is still, still applying to encroach within the county's seven foot setback. And the existing addition was done by variance through Office of Zoning and Hearing in 88. So my understanding from talking to Sean was they were told by their attorney that they would have to file with the Office of Zoning again.
Okay, I mean, you know, I'm sympathetic to this, because they're basically tearing down a, an existing intrusion and replacing it with something that's taller, but doesn't, I mean, it's actually less close to the property line. And to have to go through that process again seems cumbersome.
Can't call it a repair.
I, I, I do think, actually, since Ellen, you're here. Is there a reason you're not just cutting the roof off of the addition and going up to a second floor, adding a second floor? I guess you, you don't have a basement under the addition as well.
There is, there is a basement under the existing, although it's not very well done. Structurally, we would want something a little more sufficient to support two stories. And I don't, I don't know if you guys were provided with any photos of the existing and sketches of what we're proposing, but the existing addition is a little out of character with the house. And we're trying to just tie the whole new addition in to be more of the style of the whole existing house.
Okay. Thank you.
Bridgette, any comments? Nope. Nate, you're, you're good?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Anyone in the audience have a question regarding the, the variance? Seeing any hands? Okay. Chat. Okay. Well, um, then the staff, you are supporting the variance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion?
So Mayor Counsel, the resolution for the, if you support the variance request will be at the March meeting. So we just need a motion for the draft of resolution.
Okay.
I move that. Go ahead.
Connor, come on, you always do it. To draft a resolution for the variance on 3906 Washington Street to be considered at the March meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
We're going to be firing off motions tonight, Nate, it's going to be a long meeting as it is.
Okay, and we're down to number five, which is the Kensington Parkway bicycling and pedestrian improvements, Nate.
Okay, so can you see my screen?
Can, yes.
All right, so, um, I'll try to run through this really quickly. I need to apologize for the odd rectangular shape of the, the presentation I did. You know, one of the members of the working group put it together, and I've never seen it on this layout before, but we just have not been able to switch it. And Tracy's heard me say that at least three times.
Just did it illegally instead of documents.
Yeah, but I've never seen a presentation like this before. So anyway, so what we're looking, what I'm looking forward here after we're all said and done with giving this is really to get the green light from, from the rest of the council to pursue or request for proposals to do more detailed analysis for the options that you will see today. So that's the, that's the take home here. The impetus for this has come at, about a year ago, we had the report. That was recommendation, there were 13 recommendations from the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group. This was one of them to consider bicycling and pedestrian improvements along Kensington Parkway. And we moved forward with this initial kind of thinking and options and analysis that was done fully within the working group. We moved forward with it to align with the, the, the expand, the expanded bicycling access, the addition of the bike lanes and the shared parking south of the town along Kensington Parkway that will be built this spring sometime by the county and in partnership with WSSC. So we thought it was time to go in and analyze the options, so this is what this is. The goal really is to continue those improvements, to make a more bikeable, walkable path along Kensington Parkway and to connect and leverage the fact that these other improvements were happening with the county. Okay, so in the options or the different sections here, we have three under consideration. You can see the longest one goes from basically Littledale over to, to Kent Street here. And then, yeah, excuse me, to Calvert Place, and then from Calvert Place to Kent Street is a really small section, two. And then from Kent Street all the way to Frederick Avenue is the third section. Here is divided by three, into the three. So when I'm going through these, I want you to think of these as not either or, but if and, or yes and, and potentially doing all of them or a selection of them, it's not necessarily that we would do one or the other. So the first solution considered is thinking about having a bike facility within the road. So a separated bike facility like you see here. And on that first section, that long section along where Cabin Park is, we could do a separated bike lane on the east side next to the sidewalk. We could also have an additional designated route along the unfortunately named Kensington Parkway, which is basically the service road, duplicate name, but the service road that's there on the other side of the creek to the east. So you'll hear me talk about Kensington Parkway in two different ways, but the service road is essentially this road right here. I think you all know it, and it's how cars access the homes that are right, right there. The second is to, the second option, or the second section to have a bike lane, it would have to be same thing, but just a little bit narrower. Then the third section is where it gets interesting and a little bit complicated. One option would be to remove or keep, excuse me, to keep the parking spaces along the western side there where the houses are, and you would have to have cars and bikes share the roadway going both north and south. The second option would be to remove the parking spaces on the western side and reduce the lanes if you'd be able to squeeze a bike lane in there. And then the third option is to consider this 50 foot right away that we have on the east side of Silver Creek that is essentially the Kensington Parkway service road extends there behind the creek, between the creek and the apartments there, which we own, we found out that we own this. And we could add a separate bike path there. This is just basically showing those, what that would look like. That first option where you're, where you're sharing the road here with the cars, hopefully not biking on the sidewalk, which many people still do. And the second option is they're removing the, the parking and, and having a separated bike lane. This is that paper road, because it's only on paper, it's no road, but we have this access to this where you could extend along the service road here and essentially connect up here right where the Crum Kennedy Bridge is, right there over Frederick. Another solution is improving the signage, giving people better direction for where, where people should be biking, where people can biking, where there are some alternative routes. Here's an example where we could kind of make signed alternative route here. If you're not comfortable going down Kensington Parkway, you could direct them off onto the service road into this paper road or even, you know, maybe more neighborhood route along by the mansion and then through the neighborhood there. The pedestrian improvements that we flagged were that regardless of what bicycling improvements are made, you know, making more, more and more visible crosswalks across Kensington Parkway, because there's only really one right now and it's not very well marked, but making it easier for people across, across the street. And then also adding potentially sidewalks on the west side, particularly those that are, the sections that are north of Washington Street where there are missing sidewalks right now. So how we got to where, to tonight, I presented a version of this to the Mobility and Traffic Committee about a month ago. And then from that input, we revised it, went back to the, to the pedestrian bicycling access and safety working group, incorporated the feedback from that into what you're seeing tonight. The working group's response was, you know, basically any detailed analysis should consider all the options, because we may not have, have considered an option that whatever firm that we would hire to do a more detailed analysis, they might come up with different solutions that are potentially better, but this is just the start. Even so, they tended to like this, in particular, the option of using the service road and then extending it to the paper road. But regardless of if that was an option that was developed, that it shouldn't be that or the full Kensington Parkway, but maybe Kensington Parkway would still get some sharrows and not a separated designated bike lane, but with pedestrian improvements. This was just us thinking kind of during the meeting, and that was where the, the working group was generally settling on. But again, it's not their, theirs or our decision, this is something that should go to a design stage and thorough public input from that point, once we can see the options and what they look like and what the costs might be. Some of the concerns that they flagged, and again, a detailed analysis, we'll get into more of this, but is that the section between Frederick and Littledale is going to be a little bit cumbersome? Because there is parking there and it gets narrow, and that's a section that, you know, is critical for connecting from the improvements that are being done by the County Department of Transportation, whatever we're doing. because there is parking there and it gets narrow, and that's a section that, you know, is critical for connecting from the improvements that are being done by the County Department of Transportation, whatever we're doing. So we just, that's going to take some careful attention. And then potential issues around if we were to build out that paper road, it could be some concerns with flooding or getting mucky around there because of the way that the the slope is in the terrain there. So that would have to be studied as well. One thing that we discussed over email since I since I presented that to the working group was, you know, the fact that we may want to, and this is a recommendation of the working group after discussing it over email, we may want to, if we're gonna go ahead with this detailed analysis on Kensington Parkway, we may also want to put in the scope of work the consideration of Pliers Mill improvements. We did not study those initially, but, you know, I I I think that it could still go forward with the detailed analysis. And the reason being is that Kensington Parkway and Pliers Mill are really the the two key portions of the bicycling master plan that the county has for kind of connecting the coordinate work for the surrounding areas. So at the same time, the the new development there, the crossing of Kensington, Pliers Mill and Connecticut makes for bike lanes, it's an opportune time to to consider kind of similarly like we're considering the Kensington Parkway improvements because of the WSSC and Department of Transportation, the County Department of Transportation project, this would be another good impetus for why we would do it at Pliers Mill too. Yeah, so there's, there's, there's good justification for why we would want to consider them both in a request for proposals, but that, you know, great to hear your feedback on that. Last slide, this is where again, back to the main point, looking for, you know, I'm happy to answer questions. I think there are other people in the working group that are on the call tonight, but really the next step would be doing a detailed engineering or more detailed design and visualization of options, including cost benefit, looking at what the CapEx and OpEx would be, maintenance timelines, and then if there are resources for the capital improvements that would be needed, helping helping us to identify what those would be. And had in bold here, because it's critical, what we advocate for this is that we want to do thorough public outreach and get input along the way for whatever options are going to be considered. All right. I will keep my screen up in case you ask me to go back to look at anything that I presented, but that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, Council, do you have any questions for Nate regarding the presentation?
Nate, can you just go back to the this paper road issue? Are we talking about a paper road between Kent and Frederick?
Yes. It's behind the the Mormon apartments next to the creek.
And and it, because I mean, I don't know that, you know, the wooded area as well as anybody else would put somebody down there, but I mean, it just, it would appear that that creek flows through that paper road like at a very obtuse angle, meaning it's almost parallel to the paper road.
Yeah, it's parallel, it goes right here, yeah, right there.
And so so is it all on one side of this?
Yeah, it's between the apartments, it's basically this fifty foot section right here. And that, this is not drawn exactly, I just put a dashed line on there, but this is basically where it is. Matt had a good view of it.
There's a, there's a fifty foot right away to the east of Silver Creek. I I believe delegate Carr confirmed with us that it was the old trolley line, if I remember correctly. So it's a fifty foot right away essentially from Kent Street up to Frederick Avenue. The Brookside Apartments have been maintaining the area for the town for a number of years, but it is within our our right of jurisdiction.
I guess the the reason I'm asking is I see that sort of the outline of the creek between Kensington Parkway and the dashed red line. But I also know that the creek goes to the right of Old Town Market, so somehow it switches over.
Yeah, this might, this might be more like here is where the path would be. This is again, not drawn necessarily exactly how it would look. But yeah, it would extend, the path does start, I think, exactly directly across from where Kensington Parkway terminates here.
Okay. Hopefully, I I would be interested in seeing what our right of way there is. And and then how much that would impact can the Clum Kennedy Park?
It wouldn't impact Clum Kennedy at all, and it's because it's separated by the by the creek, which is pretty wide there. And it would be more likely to be a pervious type path, not a hard surface path. I mean, that would be part of the study is what
Exactly.
they're best. But, you know, it's, you know, the a good opportunity to get bike riders off that narrowing of Kensington Parkway, and you want to discourage them from going through the Clum Kennedy. So having them to the on the other side of the creek would make would be better.
Yeah, no, and I I don't disagree with you, I just, okay, I you know, in the good old days, we could just put an impervious path and not worry about ADA and endangered species and all that stuff, but it just seems like a lot of times these days to build something, we suddenly trigger so many additional laws that 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 jack up the cost. I I'm I'm happy to, you know, continue kind of looking into the
If you're riding a bicycle, you're probably not ADA. And then, and then there really is plenty of room there. I mean, it's worth a a walk over there, you know, on a warm weather day, we're gonna have coming up and just seeing how much space there actually is. So.
But because it's it's great, they're great points, and I think something that we'd want to look at when we study it. And something I forgot to mention, Darren. Sorry, I wanted to mention that here, if you can see my cursor, on the service road, I don't think we're talking about a separated bike lane here. This is just a guided path, you know, maybe some sharrows, just, just sign better signage to get people on here. But, you know, maybe we do, maybe we do need to do some infrastructure there. I don't know the width of the road and how much traffic is there, but all this would be considered, I think, in the in the study.
The only other thing, and I don't want to, you know, make this project too broad or or bring in too many sort of unrelated issues, but if we're gonna do this, I really hope we would finally get rid of the sharrows on Connecticut Avenue. If we're gonna provide a safe alternative on Kensington Parkway, I just think bikes have absolutely no business being on can on Connecticut Avenue. The county has told us they would never have supported putting those things in. And it just seems like it's high time to to get rid of those.
Well, the good thing is, I'm laughing just because it seems so distance wise far away, but I know that is the main alternate route. So the the good thing is that the TLC grant study is considered, you know, these are part of the things that are being considered in that analysis, and there'll be plenty of time for input for that too over the next couple of months, as well as the state will be putting out, I think, I think you're aware of this, the Connecticut corridor study, and I think that that will get to not just pedestrian improvements, but also I think it'll speak to traffic calming measures and bicycling as well.
Yeah, I understand the the state highway Connecticut Avenue has been delayed, even though they're kind of updating some some things after presenting it to the delegate to the delegation, R eighteen.
Yeah. I they, I actually checked with them today, Tracy, and and they said that they will have it done by the end of the month.
Okay. Yeah, I spoke to Janico at Chevy Chase View and and they were having to go back and revise some of the ish study, so.
Yeah.
Because they had told us it would be posted on the website, and it has not yet, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I I think as, you know, having attended some of these meetings with Nate, you know, I think I think there's some great opportunities here to create a real bike connection, but I think we do need professional help to make sure that we're doing it correctly and providing the markings that are necessary or the least maybe obtrusive to, you know, that we could do it with paint, or we can do it with sensaling, or we can do it with, you know, a small amount of signage, you know, we may not have to get into the flex posts or things like that. So I think having the professional help would be would be really funds well spent, so.
It would be great to hear other council members, if they've questions, or especially on the Pliers Mill recommendation too, because that maybe good to get some guidance on that.
Now, I see the Pliers Mill, that was down through Ken Gar, is that correct, or is it in both directions?
No, I'm talking, we're talking about Pliers Mill on the east side of town.
Okay, okay.
Because that's another.
Yeah, Bridget stepped off for a few minutes to take care of Maya. She'll be back, so she may not have an opportunity to chime in here, but Connor, did you have any additional thoughts?
No, I mean, I think the question before us is, would we support funding to get more of a technical study for an RP, right? Because I think the kind of questions I'd have are the kind of things that that's why we would go for a technical, right? I mean, one of the biggest things as I looked at your presentation is, I mean, I see missed opportunities. Our kids aren't aren't clustered into Silver Creek Mill School. And what a shame, because this would have been a perfect pathway to get kids biking down to that school, but you know, that's just the way it is. But when I look at at the Kensington Parkway, call it service road option, I'd love to hear, so yeah, I'm supportive of funding for more technical expertise, because my immediate questions would be does, you know, taking a a jagged approach and moving off the parkway onto the service road and then back, you know, what is it, does that typically drop ridership? I mean, people are like, hey, I'm just gonna continue on the parkway. Like, I know there's a path over there. There's also a lot more curb cuts, there's a lot, you know, additional controlled roads, it's a twenty foot wide street. I I just wonder if keeping it on the main parkway makes the most sense. And then it comes down to other planned infrastructure stuff. Go back to to, so those are my thoughts, is I I think, yeah, I these, I'd love to get those questions answered too.
Which slide do you want me to go to, Connor?
Pliers Mill. Yeah, so we've got a separated, in the bike master plan, it's a proposed separated bike lane from summit over to Connecticut and then moving eastward from Connecticut to the intersection with Lexington. And then at that point, it just becomes a side path, I guess the idea is that you then what, drive up the apron for the Montessori school and use the existing sidewalk that's there?
Um, I'm not sure, actually. I have not looked very detailed at this. Chris, if he's still on the call, may know more, my co-chair Chris Zappi, I don't know if you want to come in, if you're here.
And if he's not, I mean,
I saw him earlier, but that's okay.
We, I mean, we're not fixing anything tonight. The question is just, do we throw Pliers Mill Road into the scope of a PW has to be written for an RFP, sorry, for a performance work statement for a request for proposal. I realize I'm using jargon. So.
I think it actually doesn't matter so much, because these are indicative. This is what they proposed when they studied it, thought this was the best recommendation for a certain section of of roadway, right? But as you can see with Kensington Parkway, which I think was recommending a separated bike lane, we're suggesting to consider other options too, to do a more detailed analysis, so I think we could be, we could, we don't have to be bounded by what's shown here.
I think Anne Banville has her hand up, Nate, if.
Oh, sure.
Hi, Anne Banville, resident of Kensington Parkway. Nate, can you please give me what the proposal is for the block of Frederick to Little Dale?
There is no proposal. We need to study it. That's the part that I was saying is really challenging, because the houses there, and I think you live in one of those houses?
Yes.
Yeah, so obviously there's parking there, and the way that that part, that the parking along Kensington Parkway is being dealt with in the south, in the portions of the improvements that are south of town that the county is doing, is they've interspersed parking, and they've combined parking and a bike lane there. I just don't know, we don't know if there's an opportunity to do both, to keep the parking and have a bike lane too, or you would have to do a shero and not have any separated bike lane. It's a tricky part, not only because of the parking, but if you have a bike lane, let's say on the east side, or excuse me, if you have, yeah, if you have bike lanes or sharrows on the east side, you would also need to figure out a way to get them across to the county part that is going to be on the west, excuse me, you have bike lanes in our section of Kensington Parkway on the west side next to Cabin Park, right? If there's sharrows, you have to somehow figure out the way to get them onto the the east side where joins up with the county portion where those improvements are going to be. They're not going to be on the west side, they're going to be on the east side. So right there is probably where you would do it, but that depends on if any improvements were going to happen on the west side, which is not what we really looked at. We suggested to keep it on the east side, but again, it's not a detailed analysis.
Okay, thank you. My concern is that overall, you are not taking into account the current recreational use of Kensington Parkway with respect to Kensington Cabin Park and the playing fields. And there are, and the basketball court is there and the tennis court. What that means is that there is parking on both sides of Kensington Parkway all the time, either for families and children's soccer or down at Kensington Cabin Park for the use of the basketball court and so on. It's a, it's a very happy situation. That that cabin and that park and the playing fields are used all the time. And that, and 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 that is the greater number of people rather than bicyclists, I will tell you that. And so to disrupt it is a it's a huge concern. The second concern I have is that Kensington Parkway has become somewhat of an alternative to Connecticut Avenue, so that we get people going down on Kensington Parkway to avoid traffic on Connecticut and then up again. So you've got added traffic, and you've got the recreational use all the time going on up and down, and then add the third factor, which is this is a residential area, Nate. This is not like other areas where bike lanes have been proposed. And so I think there's, there's a great danger of spoiling the residential use of Kensington Parkway, the residence use of Kensington Parkway. And then add the fact of the the white poles that separate this, which is so unsightly. And if you're familiar, Kensington Parkway was designed as a country road. And it's, it's a lovely street. And it is used by cyclists all the time. They come from all over down, and I don't see the, now, I'm not talking about the recreational uses, I'm talking about the people who are serious cyclists, they already use the parkway, and I don't see them using any of the kind of of proposed thing that you're talking about. They're going too fast. They use it as a, you know, straightaway, and that's been going on for thirty plus years that I've been living here. So there are already established recreational uses of Kensington Parkway, residential uses, and now increased traffic. And I think it's just a a terrible idea to turn this into part of bike lanes in the way that you're proposing and talking about. Those are my concerns in a nutshell, and I wanted the council to hear them now. I would also urge you to do nothing until you get outreach to residents along Kensington Parkway, as opposed to come forward with a plan, and I base that on the county's experience in the block of of Kensington Parkway below me, where they have been very heavy handed in dealing with resident concerns there, and I would not like to see that repeated here. It's, it's just not the way we live in Kensington. So I would say that sooner rather than later, please do outreach to residents along Kensington Parkway. So I would say that sooner rather than later, please do outreach to residents along Kensington Parkway. I will take any questions you have about what I said.
Thank you, Anne. I actually don't have any questions. I just appreciate you sharing your concerns and I think this is exactly the reason why we would want to. Go forward with more designed analysis to understand what this would look like. It's hard to do outreach when you don't have a good understanding of really what it would look like, what it would feel like. Data supporting a lot of the claims that you make about how it's used. I mean, that's what we want to study. Um, and I think knowing what the costs would be, you know, what the timelines would be, what the options would be. I want to be clear that we are not proposing to do any of this. It's to analyze it and. Um, I've heard positive feedback from many people who, who want this to go forward. So it's really just asking to. Get this, get the, you know, get the green light to move forward with getting the data, studying it and hearing what, you know, what people want.
Yeah, and, and I would urge you to become familiar with the recreational uses already.
I use it. I use it that way all the time.
The basketball court, the tennis court.
I am very familiar with it.
Are you? Okay.
I do, I do know what you're talking about and I don't think. And maybe I, maybe I glossed over this part, but at least in the, the options we were preliminarily considering. It wouldn't take any of the parking away from along Cabin Park. I mean, that was not a suggestion, at least what we were saying. But again, it's, you know, the, the recommendation is to move forward with more detailed analysis. But I'm very familiar with it. I mean, I'm there almost every week with our, with our family.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Um, I don't see any other.
One, one final question. Where, where do I, where do I see all these plans posted, please? I couldn't really see on your screen, so obviously I'm interested in getting a copy of the various plans that were. The visual plans that were shown.
Is the presentation with the other information for the meeting, Nate, or probably not, right?
Should, it should be. It may not have gone out, but we, I mean, easily we can make this available.
It was in the minutes. It was in the minutes from your last meeting. So Anne, there's a link I just put in the comments that'll take you right to the PDF.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. I think we can go off the screen. Stop sharing your screen now.
I see Anne's hand is up again. Were you going to ask another question?
Just to take it down?
Old hand, okay.
Good, thank you. Alright. Not seeing any other hands. Um, let's see. Okay, let me take this off. Oops. Okay, good. Counselor, Bridget's still not here, so. Darren and Connor, did you have any other questions?
My, my gut instinct is that. Analyzing improvements to the Plyers Mill Metropolitan. Conquered intersection is, is distinctive enough from this project. That I, I, and I think it's, you know, an intractable problem that I, I would, I, I would hate to sort of try to. Look at them together and I, I would, I think I would prefer to address them separately.
Is that a problem, Nate, or?
No, it's not a problem. I think there's economies of scale we can get with the, with the bid. If we're going to look at one, I think we could look at the other, but. They are different.
Okay, and, and we're looking at putting out bids, so this would be in our next fiscal budget, correct? Okay.
Or sooner, if we can do it.
Okay.
Matt will check the couch cushions at Town Hall.
And again, just to, just to emphasize, it's not bids to go forward with a plan.
No, it's for the study.
Analyze the options and then. And solicit feedback on those options. And to get the data to show, you know, what the, what the current use stage is and, you know. Analyzed.
Do we have any recent traffic data on Kensington Parkway, Matt? No?
No, we actually will have some by the end of this fiscal year, though. We'll have Kensington Parkway, the 10-200 block. Down to Kensington Cabin Park.
Okay.
Will it include cyclists, Matt?
I, I don't, I, I'll ask the traffic engineer. It's for vehicles. I don't know how they would measure bicycles, but I can ask the traffic engineer. How they would classify that.
That'd be great. And how many people ride their bikes on the sidewalk there because they don't feel comfortable? Is that possible to get?
I don't know about that. Let me, let me check with Joe. Um, the, the traffic study we have planned for Kensington Parkway was for vehicles and speeds.
Speed, right.
I don't, again, I'll have to talk with our traffic engineer because I don't know what they're able to do outside of vehicles.
So counting bicycles might be, need to be a separate part of the data collection.
Yeah, yeah, we can look at when we get that, the data, we can look at what we need to put in the RFP. But we can work on that with you, Matt.
Okay, good.
Hey, real quick, Nate, I'm looking back through your, your PowerPoint. Where are the, I'm going to make the assumption, are these images taken from the Bike Master Plan? The like cartoon drawings that depict the, the built infrastructure of the different.
No, we, we did that so that I should have, and I, I failed to give the credit to Jonathan Rogers and Carol Tool. They actually went out and did the measurements of the width of the, the road there at the three different spots. With our, with our measuring wheel and then use the software that they use in their day jobs to do. Um, a quick analysis of it. So they produced that. The one for Plyers Mill is out of the, the county master plan. There's no depiction of that. This is an aerial view of the dash lines, right?
So, I just want to make sure I understand it. Based on that, and if either of them are, like. This is saying if you had a, a separated bike lane with two drive lanes. Uh, two 11 foot drive lanes. I guess I'm on page five, if that helps you. Each driveline could accommodate or would have 1,500 people per hour. That are using it and a separated bike lane would have 12,000 people per hour. Is that what that, the? So am I reading that right? I'm not sure.
I think it's what it could, I think it's saying that's what it could accommodate. Not necessarily what it would.
Would be.
I would be very curious, just to understand how, you know, from a, a traffic engineering standards, a per, like. Can a 12 foot wide separated bike lane accommodate 12,000 people every hour? Not to say obviously it would. Anne, Banville, wherever you are.
It seems like a lot of people, right?
Uh, but the, you know, if we're going to put something out and start socializing, I think some of these just need to be cleaned up. And, uh, some explanations of, you know, we're not saying we're putting 12,000 bikers on Kensington Parkway. This is just, you know, whatever the, the, the standard is per what, you know. I don't know if there's a state standard or county standard or a federal standard for roadways, but. Also, curious why a four foot wide sidewalk can accommodate zero people? So.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay. That was it. Just so that. Okay, that was just a, a nitpicking comment. Sorry. Thanks.
It's fine.
Okay, um, I'm not sure at this point, because it would be going through the budget process. Do we need a motion, Matt, or is this just something that you'll?
I don't think so. What I do need to do is I need to work with Councilmember Engel and, and probably Chris Zappi to kind of get a better understanding of. Um, putting some specs together for an RFP going forward. I, I don't know. I have a lot of questions, just how to write this. Um, and I'm hoping that Chris can help us, Nate.
I think we can, we can work with you. Other, other members of the working group can probably help too.
Okay, so my plan was to set aside some, some funds for FY23 for the study. And then we can put an RFP out. Um, and go from there.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Hopefully we can piggyback off somebody else's RFP, so we don't. I'm kidding. No, I, look, I, I, I support, you know, putting some resources towards. Studying alternative means of transportation in town. I don't know, you know. Before we study them, I don't want to predetermine the outcome, but, but obviously. You know, what we do for bicyclists can possibly be to the detriment of other modes of transportation, other uses. So. I think it's important that we sort of get the. Analysis and then decide, you know. How we want to move forward.
And, and I think that was part of the discussion of why you would want to, you know, take that turn and go up the service road. Instead of staying on the main road. And then you wouldn't need necessarily those flex poles that I know Anne doesn't like. I'm not wild about them. So can you just say, yeah, so I think that's where we need the professional help that, because I think less is better. If we can get away with it yet and also keep it safe. Um, and that was definitely a, a part of why the paper road was a good option compared to keeping people on a road. And I'm totally not, I do not want to take parking away from our residents. Uh, whether it's down on Anne's End or on the other end across from Clum Kennedy. So, um, I think that's very important. And so the more we can get them, you know, bicyclists off of those areas, the better. But again, professional help and getting the data would be really helpful. So.
Yeah, and it's not, and just to reiterate, it's not about. You know, saying we need to build all this infrastructure just for the sake of building it and accommodating bicyclists. We want to look at pedestrian improvements too. Getting people who are parking on that other side safely across, to cross the road at, you know, various crosswalks. To improve the sidewalks. Do other traffic calming measures. I saw Alison Durland put a, a comment in the, in the chat that was to be included. Yeah, we want to do all of that. But for those that don't feel safe, and I'm one of those families that when I have my kids riding my, their bikes, even at that part of Kensington Parkway. Certainly don't want to do the south. We go up on the service road often and we'll go on the sidewalk and we don't like to do that, but you can, you know. Giving some people, people an alternative route. And giving them options, I think is what we're, we want to explore. And keeping it minimalist, right? So if it's just adding a share all, you know, with the dash line or the, the lines on the road and not having. Polls, that's great. Um, that's where we ultimately settle. And I, you know, like I said, that's what the working group was kind of grabbing. Gravitating towards anyway. Yeah, that's the spirit of it.
Okay, Anne, I'm going to let you have the last word.
Thanks. Um, I, I just do want to keep in mind the idea of. The many versus the few. And the many now are, are really already using the Parkway in a big way all the time. The kind of cycling you're talking about is really recreational use, which is not going to be. Anywhere near the level of activity that say the basketball court across from me gets. So I, I, I really hope you will think in terms of not inconveniencing the many for the sake of the few. I think that's very important when it comes to a residential area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Okay, so I think we're done and we can move on. Alright, um, so number six is the, um, the Clum Kennedy Park improvements. Everybody received that copy. This was something that. We were probably going to be putting in the budget for next year, but the opportunity came up to do it now. It's probably. Uh, less expensive to do it now than to wait, you know, another into the CIP for next year. So, um, we want to widen the steps, which is currently at four feet. We want to widen it to five. And we're also bringing in a kind of a boulder wall around that. More, more so around the rose gardens, uh, because of the water runoff is, um, is an issue. And then we're also having problems with bicyclists trying to get into the park that way. So.
Give them an access road.
I know, so want to send it to the other side of the creek, but it'll discourage the shortcut. Uh, into the park. So, um, anyway, because it's not in the budget. Uh, we are asking the council to, um, to approve this next phase so we can get a start on it now versus next year. Council, have any questions? Seeing any, any hands. Not seeing any. Okay, um, so can we get a motion from the council so that staff can. Go ahead and sign the contract and they'll get the work done in March. One of the things that we are putting into the budget for Clum Kennedy next year is we want to bring electricity. Um, into the park. So that's, um, something we want to use it more. And part of these improvements is to be able to have more events, but electricity is extremely handy and it also helps the crew. Because they can get water out of the creek with a pump, but they need electricity to run the pump. So that's. Otherwise they have to bring in a generator. So having electricity for events and for watering purposes. Is really helpful. So, but that'll, that'll definitely be in next year's budget. It's my item. So can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the invoice for shore landscaping for improvements to Clum Kennedy Park.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, um, council, do you have any other reports that you want to bring forward before we go to. Town manager and staff? Nate, did you want to say anything else?
I talked enough, but, um, just two very quick things. Just wanted to flag to everybody that. There's a new speed camera on Connecticut Avenue right near Franklin. I think at the, uh, intense pressure of Debbie Chase's view and advocacy, I should say. And in support, I think of the, um, the District 18 delegation. So grateful for that. Because I know that that's something they wanted very much so to help calm traffic in that area where there's been so many tragic accidents. So. Um, that was installed, I think in January. So I think we may have missed it, the opportunity to announce it. I don't think we flagged that. The other thing is related to that on the Connecticut Avenue study for the TLC grant that we have. Just want to give a heads up. I'll give a more, more detailed update next month, but. We are going to have a public hearing or not, excuse me, not public hearing, a public meeting, public forum for considering the options. That are going to be presented by, uh, by that study. Um, that date is going to be April 21st. Uh, the evening of April 21st and it's going to be hybrid. It's going to be in person option at the Armory. So just to flag that, you'll hear a lot of it from me and from the town over the next two months, but just want to put it on people's radar. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Darren, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Connor?
Just one, the Montgomery County's Planning Historic Preservation Office. Sent a letter that they will begin work along St. Paul Street with the handful of historic homes there, of which I live in one of them. Um, I'm sorry, I'm, what am I, I'm a custodian of one of them, so I was told. But, uh, long story, hopefully shorter is, uh, we did work on our home. We applied for the tax credit program and we were denied the state tax credits. The county ones are still pending. And when we inquired as to why, uh, it turns out the state does not recognize any of the homes along St. Paul Street. North of Metropolitan, even though they are in the county's historic district, Kensington's historic district with the county. The, they are not part of the, the group of homes that are recognized in the National Register of Historic Places. So they don't qualify for state tax credits, um, which I didn't know. So they don't qualify for state tax credits, um, which I didn't know as a property owner. And I talked to some of my neighbors and they just, they all assumed as well that, that they did qualify because they, they were in a historic district. So, um, brought it up with Historic Preservation Office and I'm very glad to hear they're at least, this isn't guaranteeing anything. But they have taken up the beginning of evaluation, uh, for these homes to be included into the National Register of Historic Places. There's no, you know, if granted, there's no retroactive, but it would mean that if approved going forward. Any work performed with a historic area work permit would then qualify for the state historic preservation tax credit.
Wasn't, wasn't HPC surprised that it wasn't, uh, that your house wasn't included?
Uh, yeah. In fact, HPC has, without their help, I don't think we would have gotten this far, um, because the state was vehement that it was not. Uh, you know, for people who care about the, the ins and outs of this, the reason why is. Even though the county, that, you know, the town engaged the county back in nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty to create the historic district. And these homes were included in an amendment of that historic district. The state views it as an improperly created historical set of homes that they're, they were lassoed. Up the center of the street because there's a gap from Metropolitan to the corner of Oberon where, uh, the, the first houses, you know, there's four houses in between. So they see it as, um, i- i- it does not meet the standard of the Department of the Interior and therefore. They will not recognize them, even though they're in a county historic district. Uh, the county was extremely surprised. They just assumed as well that they were included or would be included with tax credits. And, and in fact, they, they thought there were tax credits that had been granted by the state, but. They, they were somewhat shocked. So they're, they are trying to, um, see if they can rectify that, whether it's. Some way to get them recognized in the current historic district or. Possibly having to create a smaller sub-district that would then qualify just for the state credits. We already qualified for the county, so it doesn't have to change any of that, but it may have to be create its own smaller sub historic district. To try and get the, uh, the, the state to, um, authorize it.
Okay. Yeah, I did share that letter, uh, because I, I got one in the mail and, uh, I shared it with the Kensington Historical Society at the last board member, board meeting. And, uh, just as an FYI, because, um, I know on meetings that the KHS has had, um, they're, you know, have let. You know, homeowners know that they're eligible for these tax credits. So, um, I think, you know, everybody's been under the impression and including yourself, who obviously, uh, was caught off guard. And, um, so I, I think Rebecca Mala will probably, um, she'll do her due diligence. So she can't get it done. I'm not sure anybody else can. So.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay. Uh, Bridget, get back in time. Do you have anything to report or? Rehydrating after you've been with the baby. You're good.
I, I need snacks, conscious snacks. Um, no, just a lighting thing so I can wait.
Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Well, I just have a couple of little things. Um. I, was anybody on the, uh, two fourteen, uh, today's meeting with the Transportation Committee? I, uh, I was busy at work today and I wasn't able to, to log in. Um, the, uh, we had, uh, written that letter to the, for, uh, the Summit Avenue Extension. Uh, to be returned to the CIP. Our, um, county executive took it out of the CIP. And we sent a letter to, um, to the, uh, Transportation Committee, asking them that they put it back in. And that meeting was today at nine thirty. So, um, I'll, I can follow up with Evan Glass to see how that. How that went. So, um, this is a bit frustrating. Um, I did have a, um, I was at a Vision Zero meeting, um, on Saturday or as a, an event. On Saturday and had the opportunity to speak with, uh, Mark Elredge. He made the big mistake of asking me what he could do for me. And, uh, my response was we'll put the Summit Avenue Extension back in the CIP. So, um. He has different, different views on the topic. So, um. You know, we're, uh, have asked the county council to put it back in and we do have, um, you know, Andrew Friedson is, um, supporting it as well as Evan Glass and, and some other council members. But we'll see if, um. You know, what else we can do to, to get it back into the CIP budget. So anyway, so that's where we are on that. Um, I know, uh, Racial Justice Committee is meeting, um, on the sixteenth, I think it's Wednesday. And, um, they are looking at possibly holding a Juneteenth event, um, this year. And would be looking for the town to, um, to help, uh, fund that, uh, event. So we'll have more information probably next month from Ann Lichter. But I just want to give you, um, the heads up that, uh, we have some volunteers who are, who are interested in, um, putting that event together. So, um, certainly if, um, we have the people that want to, to work on it, that we can help support it. So we'll see where that is, that more information is coming probably at the March meeting. Um, also, um. Just wanted to update everybody that the, um, Warner, um, Mansion, uh, the, uh, Go Committee and the Fed Committee. Which is the government operations and the planning, housing and economic development committees met, uh, last week. And, um, they, um, they voted to, um, approve the sale of the Warner Mansion and the Carriage House. So it's moving on to the, um, to the full council on, um, tomorrow. And it's on the consent, uh, calendar. So that pretty much, uh, sounds like that, uh, they will, um, approve it. So, um, the, um, the house and the carriage house would be sold to the, uh, Warner Circle Mansion Condominiums LLC. So this is, uh, indeed really great news that, um, that the, um, we should be seeing, um, hopefully soon. Um, the, um, the renovation of the house and the carriage house. So this is, this is great news. So I expect there'll be, um, opportunities to review plans through the Historic Preservation Commission, uh, at some point. But, uh, um, but, uh, the house is, um. Um, going to finally, uh, get the, um, renovation repairs and have, uh, reactivated with, uh, people living there, which is great, great news. So, um, let's see. Oh, and one other item I wanted to, uh, bring up to, uh, everybody's attention was, um. You know, we're moving into, uh, County Council District Four, the new four. And we have, um, an opportunity, we will be getting a new county council person. And, um, I'd like to have, um, think about having a, uh, candidate's forum. Right now we have three, um, people that are running for, um, the county council seat for District Four. And I was hoping to put together a ad hoc committee to, uh, help, um, organize that. Would certainly want to do it before the, um, the primary, which, um, I believe is in June. And, um, and we could possibly look at adding the at-large members as well. So, um, is there someone on the council who'd be interested in, uh, working on that with me or? Connor? Okay. Great. Bridget? Okay. Good. And we'll, um, hopefully get a couple of residents would be helpful as well to, um, to put that together. I don't know whether, um, you know, we're just going to do it by, um, Zoom or we want to do a hybrid, but that's something that the, um. That the ad hoc committee can decide. So I'll reach out to you guys, um, probably tomorrow and see what we can get a meeting going. Okay. Good. Um, thank you. And, um, the last thing I just want to announce that, that the town of Kensington was chosen to be, uh, one of MML's Spotlight Maryland towns. So, um, this is, um, that we'll have a videographer coming to the town to take some videos. And it's just, um, just little spots. It's, you know, like thirty seconds, but, uh, you know, we'll be out there, uh, with some other towns. Um, I believe that Gaithersburg, Poolsville and the town of Kensington are the, are the towns that are being, uh, recognized in Montgomery County. So, um, but it's statewide, so there'll be other towns as well, like Annapolis is on there and Upper Marlboro and some others. So, um, so that was a pleasant surprise to be chosen for that. Okay. So that's all I've got. So let's, uh, move on down to the town manager and staff. Matt?
Uh, Mayor Council, there's, um, three house bills, uh, that we've been asked to support. From, uh, one from Delegate Carr and two from Delegate Solomon. Uh, the first one is House Bill three eight one. Uh, which is a municipality's charter amendment notice. Essentially what this would allow is a municipality to no longer have to post. In four consecutive weeks, weeks in a newspaper of general circulation after a charter, uh, resolution is adopted. Like, for example. The charter resolution that we're introducing this evening, if it were to be adopted by the town. Um, in the future, we would have to post in the Washington Post for consecutive weeks. Um, this has become an issue for a lar- a large number of smaller municipalities in Maryland. And what the bill would allow us to do is do what we're already, um, doing now, either post it in our around town journal or do we send a postcard? So if anyone has any questions on HB three eight one?
No questions. This seems like, you know. I mean, at least.
Yeah, agreed. I mean. I think this is just sensible government.
Well, they, they're smaller newspapers are pretty much gone now. And, um, so quite honestly, the state is just finally catching up to this. They're figuring out that municipality should not have to advertise, you know, in the Washington Post and spend thousands of dollars. On, uh, on this type of thing. So. So having an alternative is, um, is good. Okay. So any other questions on that from the council? Anyone in the audience? Okay. Um, do you want a motion to support the letter or?
Yes.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead, Nate.
It's not a four, Nate.
I have, all right, I'll move to support. Um, I'm going to left for the town's support for HB zero three eight one.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Okay. Thank you. All right. Number two?
Thank you. Um, Senate Bill, uh, eight three five, which was, um, also submitted as House Bill one zero three four. Um, I don't know if Delegate Carr is still on the call. Uh, if he'd like to, uh, provide additional information.
There is.
I'm going to turn it over to Delegate Carr because this is his bill. So.
All right. Thanks. Thanks, Matt. Thanks, everybody. So, uh, yeah. So the bill number is, uh, it's Senate Bill. Three seventy six. And House Bill ten eighty three. Um, so basically the idea behind the bill is to strengthen. The existing law from two thousand and seven that the town was, uh, involved in getting passed. Um, and that law is, you know, sets out the rules for when a municipality wants to. Uh, acquire the street lighting from a utility and then, uh, take over the ownership. That way they can, uh, partner with the private sector directly to, uh. Uh, install the lights that they want, choose the maintenance provider that they want. That existing law from two thousand and seven is, um. Not, not working. No municipality has been successful in making use of that. So, uh, this bill comes back to strengthen. That original law and it's enabling, it just sets out the, a, um. A more predictable process for how to resolve disputes. How do you value the lights? You know, uh, what are the steps that would be involved and what's the role in Public Service Commission? Uh, in doing it, it's modeled after laws that have been on the books in, uh, a number of other states. And the hearing for the Senate bill is tomorrow at, uh, one PM and then the House bill is on March tenth.
Uh, that's a quick turnaround for a letter, Al.
So, uh, yes.
And I'm all already weigh in supporting this bill?
What was the question?
Did MML already plan to support this bill?
Um, yes, MML is in support of the bill and we've gotten letters from about, uh, five other municipalities. So far, and I know there are some other municipalities meeting tonight that are, you know, having a similar conversation.
Did Chevy Chase, section five, are they supporting it? Cause I know Andy Harney's.
Uh, yes, we received a letter from Andy Harney in support of the bill.
Okay. Cause I know she follows it very closely and it's something that's, uh, they're very interested in. So. Okay. Bridget, do you have anything to add to it? I know you're, follow it.
No, I had a little summary, but I didn't know Al was going to be here. So I feel like. Out of my league. Could have stayed right here.
Okay.
So just, just help me understand it. We have a, we have a law. That isn't working. And so we're going to replace it with this law. That's modeled on other laws in other states. Is there anything that you can point to to say that these other laws in other states have been more successful than our law has been?
I, I can say something here if you want me to, Al, or I can shut up. Um, i- if you look at the laws, the, as it exists now, it's kind of obtuse. There's lots of like kind of amorphous like affirmations and not a whole lot of definitions. Um, and I think what is sort of, uh, an improvement, at least to me, when I read it is there's actual definitions. That will say this is what you do have to do. This is what you don't do. Um, it kind of lays everything out in a way that's much more explicit. And frankly, this is something that I've had to do in other area, other commodities. Um, you know, you write the law. There is an entity that seems to be able to wriggle their way around it and you come back and make it more explicit. I mean, that's what I see happening here at least.
And so what other states have adopted this and, and found success?
Pennsylvania, I think. Where else, Al?
So New York State, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Maine. Um, all have laws, you know, one of the issues, the tip, where things typically, um. You know, grind to a halt is when you talk about the value, how do you put a value on the lights that are owned by the utility? To be acquired in the way that the two thousand and seven law was written. Um, didn't exactly jibe with the Maryland constitution. So this, this law is written. To, um, be completely compatible with the Maryland constitution for how, how to, how to value lights. Um, District of Columbia is another example. All those lights are, were transferred from Pepco to the DC government in the eighties. And so, uh, they have the complete freedom to. Manage those lights as they see fit without being limited by, you know, the tariff or the Public Service Commission or the utility.
Okay.
Nate, you are, Connor, have any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, uh, we need to get a letter in, uh, what, before the one o'clock or?
So the letter can, uh, so ten AM is tomorrow is the, uh. The deadline to get it into the official bill file, but there's nothing stopping a letter from being just emailed. To the committee afterwards. That's another way to get it, you know, to the decision makers.
Okay. Okay. Can you, um, email Matt the information of where it should go unless you've already done that? Just want to make sure that it gets to the right spot. Okay. Cause we can just keep it simple and that way we're, get it in faster. Okay. Um, well, let's make a motion. Um, I don't see any hands. Um, anybody has any questions regarding this? Supporting this bill? Okay. Um, can somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Darren, you can do it.
Go ahead, Darren.
No, you, you spent the work putting stuff together.
For nothing. I make a motion to write a letter in support of, uh, HB, should we do SB HB? Or is it?
Ten eighty three?
Ten eighty three. There you go.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Okay. Number three?
Uh, Mayor Council, uh, Delegate Solomon proposed House Bill one hundred, which is a sustainable Maryland Program Fund Establishment. Um, Councilmember Angle might be able. Um, Councilmember Angle might be able to provide a little additional information. On, uh, the Sustainable Maryland Program was, are you familiar with this or?
Nate, go ahead.
You're muted.
Nope.
There you go. I couldn't unmute. Thank you. Think I reached my limit. Yeah. So this is the. Remember, we're considering the. Main Streets Program back in October, November. And we had the presentation and one of those was to get designated as a sustainable community. There was, um. Kind of became the conclusion that we probably were already under those standards, which were quite minimal. And researching that, we've realized that there's actually another certification that is this sustainable community certification that's supported by the University of Maryland and M M L. Um, and it's more rigorous, involves, you know, a pretty elaborate, more elaborate process, I would say, much more robust. Way of, of ensuring that we're a sustainable community. Um, and what this bill is going to do, I think, is, is more or less fund that program so that they could support other communities like ours and seeking technical assistance and support. From, um, University of Maryland or whoever is running program in partnership with the state. To, you know, to become a sustainable community. So it's not for us to, to pursue it, but just to support the legislation. As it's being proposed in this session for funding the program and ultimately down the road, working with them to, um. I would, I would, I would eventually advocate that we go this route, but that's not what we're to get, to get designated as a sustainable, sustainable community, but that's not what. This letter is.
So in other words, the state is actually putting money behind, you know, something that they have, you know, they want people to do. They're not just, they're actually going to provide like, I guess, grant funding or something, or, uh, as you said, the technical support that you can get it without having to, to cough up. More money for it, correct?
That's right. Or continue to support it because I think they've supported it in the past and it may have just run out.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I know, um, Jared's been, uh, working on that. And then we did, uh, send a, um. Mind Nate, what we did, um, after nine o'clock, my head starts to.
Yeah, so, um. Gentleman named Mike Honeyhake. He, I think, was leading the effort to ask municipalities to sign on to the letter of support. And that's what we.
Right.
Um, I asked him for an update. And he gave it to me today. He said that. They had a successful House Appropriations Committee hearing in January, and then another successful Senate Economy, Health and Environmental Affairs Committee meeting last week. It's all been positive. Says, you know, he thinks that it looks, it looks like it's in good shape, but I guess you never know. Now probably can attest to that. Um, so they're just looking for. You know, it doesn't hurt to have more support. So.
Okay. I think M M L supports it as well. So.
Yeah, I think actually M M L, if I remember correctly, I didn't get a chance to go back and look at my notes from previous meetings. But I think M M L, I think they were part of the program. They were helping to run it. But I did not see.
Right. Sustainable Maryland is always, you know, at any of our conferences, they're always there. So I know, um, the organization definitely supports, supports the program. Okay. Okay. Uh, do you know if Jared needs this letter also tomorrow or? We, we can reach out to Jared.
My understanding is the deadline already passed, but, uh, he asked for support either way that we could send it.
Okay. All right. Sort of like with Al, you can send it after the fact.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So can, uh, Nate, you want to make a motion or?
Yeah, actually I just had a question. Um. Matt, maybe we could go back to Jared and ask if it's sufficient that we just signed on to that letter or do they actually need a separate letter?
Okay, I can, I can ask his staff in the morning, so.
And then if they need a separate letter, we make a, like a proactive motion that we.
Yeah, let's, let's just make a motion that if a letter is needed, that we will go ahead and do it. So if you want to make it that way.
A move to draft a letter in support of H B zero one zero zero S B zero zero one four. To support the Sustainable Maryland, Maryland Program Fund if that letter is needed.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor? Okay. Thank you very much. Um, Matt, did you or Susan have anything else tonight? Are you good?
Just real quick, um, we are currently in the ADA and sidewalk improvements, um, in and around Town Hall of Fawcett.
I hadn't noticed.
No. It's been a little, little loud and a little dirty and noisy in our town hall last week. We were hoping that they might finish the concrete work this week. Uh, it's probably going to be early next week. Um, and then the milling and paving. Will happen sometime in March. Um, we need a little warmer temperatures, especially with the installation of the flexi pave. Uh, which they'll do over at St. Paul Park as well. Once we hit about fifty degrees and rising, so. Just, um, so next week and then milling paving probably in March, so.
Well, it, it's going to be great when it's done, but I, I have to admit, when I, I walked out of the building today and I had a profanity because I realized there was no sidewalk to take me to the street. So anyway, but when it's finished, it's going to be great. So, and, uh, and all the little Brookwood girls get to go through the front door instead of the side door. At least hopefully it, it should be, it looks like they're going to pour concrete tomorrow. So, uh, maybe by, uh, Wednesday they'll be able to.
Yeah, they're, they're scheduled to pour tomorrow. Um, so should cure and, and we, they'll be able to flip over to Armory on Thursday.
Okay. Good. Good. Yeah, that'll be nice when that's done. But, um, as I said, it's going to look great when it's done. And this type of work is never convenient. So, um, but anyway. All right.
Shifts for handprint watch or dog print watch in the sidewalk.
You know, they're pretty smart. They, they put it down in the morning when they're all there, you know, the workers are there. So, you know, the kids aren't going to do something when the workers are there. And then it cures pretty quickly. So I'm not sure. You know, in the six, seven hours that, you know, they're, they're still there that they get to do that. So, but yeah, I.
Armory Avenue got tagged on the new sidewalk. So. Uh, there's two young, young boys in the town that got their name in it.
There you go.
Well, they did do some on.
I, so. I did not recognize them.
Yeah. Anyway, we're not going to name names. You can go down and look at it yourself. So. All right. So let's move on to public appearances. Uh, if anyone has anything that's not on today's agenda, agenda that wants to say something, and I see Jack's hand up. So, Jack?
Thank you. Two things. First, I'm, I'm pleased to see the, the, the roadwork for, for the bump out at the intersection of. Of Fawcett and, and Howard Avenue. At the January council meeting, the Mobility and Traffic Committee also talked about installing two mirrors at forty five degrees. So that one can see. Who is coming on Howard Avenue without having to stick your nose out. And there's a, there's a utility pole right in the, uh, right next to the wall on the, on the roadside of Howard Avenue. Be the perfect place to put it. And I. And I like to encourage. Encourage the town to do it. You get a lot of benefit for a low cost for that.
Okay.
Good. Second, um. There's not a whole lot happening astronomically this month. There'll be a full moon on Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Okay. Is it going to be clear?
Hold on. I gotta ask a question because I thought for sure. Because I, I read, you know, there was a report about, um. What was it? Amazon or whoever, you know, they put up Elon Musk, uh, you know, dozens and dozens of satellites two years ago. And like half of them just got wiped out by, was it an asteroid storm? That just occurred, Jack?
No, I think, well, I think it was a magnetic storm. You know, the. That's what comes after a solar flare. Because you get a big burst in the solar wind, which carries with it the, the magnetic field. Which then interacts with the Earth's magnetic field. If, if they are oppositely directed. And then changing magnetic fields induce like currents. Which do bad things to satellites.
Well, that's what I wanted to hear about tonight. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Not seeing any hands. So we will, uh, move on to ordinance resolutions and regulations. Matt?
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, before you this evening is ordinance number O dash zero three dash twenty twenty one, which is an ordinance of the mayor and town council to amend Chapter Four Traffic and Vehicles. Article three, traffic control, section four dash three oh two, speed limits. In the town of Kensington to reduce the speed limit along town, maintain streets from twenty five miles per hour to twenty miles per hour. Um, the council received three additional comments, um, through four P M. This past Friday. Uh, with regards to the proposed ordinance. Um, and, uh, the public hearing was held Monday, January tenth, twenty twenty two.
And just for the public record, I believe the, um, the comments we received, they, uh, were not. Wanting to lower the speed. Is that correct?
Correct. There were two that were opposed to lowering the speed and the third was, um, in favor. However, they had concerns about lowering the speed on Kensington Parkway. Uh, this is Kensington Parkway, south of Frederick Avenue.
Okay. Okay. All right. Uh, we are not taking any more additional public comments. Uh, we had the hearing last month, so, um, we just need a motion. To, um, for the ordinance.
I just want you.
Technically, I was, this one was Darren's. So I was going to defer to Darren.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number O dash zero three dash twenty twenty one.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All this in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Matt, number two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the ordinance will take effect July first, twenty twenty two, which is the first day of the fiscal year. Um, we have the sign, we do, we need to purchase the signs. Um, so it gives us a little time to, to transfer over.
How many signs total?
Um, I don't have the total number for this one yet. Um. I, I, we, I think it was like fifteen or sixteen. Um, we had our cone enforcement officer, Annie, do a quick check around town. Um, but our traffic engineer would do a formal count.
Okay.
Um, before you this evening is Charter Resolution Number C R dash zero one dash twenty twenty two. This is an introduction of Charter Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Kensington, amending, amending Article Four. Council Section four oh three qualifications of council members. Article five, the mayor, section five oh three qualifications of the mayor and Article seven, registration, nominations and elections. Section seven oh one qualifications of voters of the town charter to enable a noncitizen who is a lawful permanent resident. Was authorized to work in the United States to be eligible to register to vote in town of Kensington municipal elections. Um, with the charter resolution, we sent out again our letter to the community explaining, um. Why the charter resolution is being introduced. And again, this is an introduction only and we're requesting that the public hearing be scheduled for Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay. And that will be an opportunity for, um, the public to speak. Um, to the charter, uh, resolution and, um, but people can also go ahead and send their comments in, uh, through mayor dot council. So they do not need to wait, uh, for the hearing if they want to go ahead and send in their comments, um, now. But we're not taking any comments tonight, um, until the hearing, um. Okay. All right. Um, number three.
Mayor and Council.
Somebody need to make a motion to introduce it or, or are we?
I don't think we make, do we make a motion to introduce it?
Yes, uh, make a motion to introduce and set the public hearing for, um, March fourteenth. And I'd like to also note that, um. If the mayor and council decide that they will adopt this. Um, they will need to adopt it at the March meeting. In effort for these residents to be able to vote in our current election, um, just because we're required to wait fifty days. So just.
We.
Because otherwise it would be July one.
Correct. We would not have enough time to register. The, the residents on a supplemental list. To be eligible for our June sixth election unless we adopt it at the March fourteenth. So we would need to hold the public hearing on March fourteenth. And adopt on March fourteenth. It has to be done during a regularly scheduled meeting. Otherwise, we don't meet the time requirements.
Okay. So the only thing that would be, we wouldn't be able to extend the, uh, time for comment.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. We've certainly done that in the past on other issues. Okay. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion for the introduction?
Now, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty two. And to set a public hearing for Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty two at seven P M.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All is in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Number three.
Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, before you is ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty two, which is an introduction ordinance and the corresponding ordinance to the Charter Resolution. Amending Chapter two, Government and Administration, Article two, Elections, Section two dash two oh one, General Voter Registration to Enable a Noncitizen Who is a Lawful Permanent Resident. Um, or is authorized to work in the United States to be eligible to register to vote in town of Kensington Municipal Elections. Um, staff is requesting that you set a motion to set the public hearing for Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty two.
Okay.
I, I, I realize I just made a mistake with the previous motion.
Yeah, he said, uh, instead of C R.
I, I didn't realize that we have, I, I, we have two different. Things to introduce and I introduced already. Ordinance O one dash twenty twenty two and we.
Oh.
We already adopted it. So, uh, we need to introduce C R dash O one dash twenty twenty two.
Let's be very clean here. Let's just go ahead and, um, go ahead and just do the motions again, just to make sure that we have it. Okay? So let's make a motion, uh, charter. Is there a, um, please make a motion on the charter resolution?
I will make a motion to introduce Charter Resolution. Number C R dash O one dash twenty twenty two.
Okay. Is there a second?
For Monday, March fourteenth, seven P M.
Okay. So is that good? Okay, Bridget, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. And on number three, the ordinance, uh, uh, we are not taking any comments tonight. We will take that at the hearing. Um, that too can be, uh, any comments can be made to, uh, mayor dot council, um, at any point. Um, Darren, do you want to make a motion for the?
I will make a motion again to introduce ordinance number O dash zero one dash twenty twenty two. And set a public hearing for March fourteenth, twenty twenty two at seven P M.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Thank you, Bridget. All those in favor? All right. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Matt, number four.
Thank you. Um, Resolution number R dash zero one dash twenty twenty two is a resolution of the mayor and town council authorizing the town manager to contract. For the installation of a speed hump along the ten four hundred block of Kensington Parkway between Maniki Street and Oberon Street. The town received a petition. From the five residents on this block. Uh, this is the top block of Kensington Parkway, which is north of Metropolitan Avenue, requesting, um, the speed hump. Our traffic engineer conducted. A traffic analysis and the Mobility and Traffic Committee made the recommendation to move forward with the installation of the speed humps. Um, we are asking for the council's support.
Okay. So are any questions on this, uh, resolution? Okay. There any questions from the audience on the resolution? Okay. I don't see any hands. Okay. Um, can I get a motion?
I move that we, um. Adopt Resolution R dash zero one dash twenty twenty two.
Okay. Second. Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Uh, number five.
Um, the speed hump will be installed, uh, when our contractor does the milling and paving in around town hall. So they'll incorporate the speed humps at that time.
Okay.
Um, Resolution number R dash zero two dash twenty two. Um, resolution number R dash zero two dash twenty twenty-two is a resolution of the mayor and town council authorizing the town manager to establish street parking along the thirty-five hundred block of Plyers Mill Road. Uh, this area is, um, almost directly across from Spring La Lingle Monastery School. Um, we were requested by them to review the existing no parking area between, um, Plyers Mill Court and Lexington Street for additional parking. We had our traffic engineer, Joe Kuchar, evaluate, um, the area, and he determined that we could have free parking spaces in that area. Uh, we brought the request to the Mobility and Traffic Committee, in which they asked for feedback from the two adjacent neighbors. Um, we reached out to both neighbors and heard back from one. Um, they were in favor of park, uh, allowing parking, uh, street parking in that location. Uh, we are not currently asking for any restrictions. We're gonna leave it open and reevaluate for any future restrictions of the area.
Okay, and I'm sorry, did you say you, you did talk to some residents? Cause I know that was the question that came up.
We reached out to the two adjacent residents. Um, Alex reached out to them. We heard back from one. Uh, they were in favor of it. We did not hear back from the other resident.
Okay. Okay, alright, is there any questions regarding this resolution?
Maybe I could add a little bit more, um, just a, a little bit of background, what we discussed in the, in the committee meeting. Because, um, I think there were some, I raised some concerns about what, well, there were two issues that were, were flagged. One is that this may not actually address the problem that Spring Monastery has because it couldn't designate these spots for them. They have to be public, so people could just park there. The residents right there could park there presumably the whole time, and then we did nothing but just create three new parking spots, which some people might want, but I think it does create back to the issue on the, on the bicycling and pedestrian safety and access. There are a lot of bikes that use that, and it's basically taking away a safe route if you're carving that out for parking. You know, it, it limits the ability of them to kind of get over on that side. And I think there's some concern with crossing because it, where those spots are to get over to the Mon, the Monastery School and cross the street, you have to walk, you know, a decent distance to the crosswalk and then over. Um, so, I'm just, there, there may be some issues around safety and crossing there from the parking spots if they're using them. Um, I personally am not in favor of it. Especially if we don't have the second resident who would be directly impacted by it with their input, so that's my, my view.
Council, any other comments?
Um, I, I, I actually was for, uh, allowing it. I think, you know, it's the worst case scenario that resident has another opportunity to park, maybe if they have visitors or guests. And people are already gonna be car, crossing that street just further back down, closer to St. Paul Park, I believe, where they are already. So I don't think there's an increase in any sort of nuisance or hazard. I think, you know, it might be a Band-Aid on a bullet hole, but at least it's something.
Okay. Connor, Darren, any comments?
I'd, I would just say quickly that it's, it's already striked off a, as a, what appears to be like you know, lane narrowing or traffic calming. I believe the cars, parked cars do provide some traffic calming. And, and so I would support allowing parking in those spaces.
Connor?
Yeah, uh, I'm, actually Darren's comments are kind of mine. The, the comments I've heard actually more have been from residents of Plyers Mill Court that, uh, Plyers Mill is starting to become a bit of a drag strip from Georgia to Connecticut. And even with the raised crosswalk there, um, I think adding, you know, the option for parking, which could bring cars, will, you know, help to, you know, reduce the lanes and may help for traffic calming.
So any comments from the, from the audience? Not seeing any. Okay, does somebody like to make a motion on number five?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R dash zero two dash twenty twenty-two.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. I'm so sorry, Joe Campbell's not here. He'd be so happy to see us not agreeing on something. Anyway, so, his loss. Um, okay, uh, number six, final?
He can, he can always watch the replay.
There you go, there you go.
Uh, resolution number R dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two is a resolution of the mayor and town council authorizing the town manager to establish four-hour parking, seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday along the ten five hundred block of St. Paul Street. Uh, I would like to clarify, typically, this is something we would take to the traffic committee, although this has been something that we've discussed, um, for a number of years, once, uh, Modena by Solera, uh, opened. Um, so I just brought it to the council directly. Um, these are for the spaces on St. Paul, um, between uh, Metropolitan Avenue and the railroad tracks, um, so we can regulate them, so, um, they're not taken up by, um, basically to keep the parking open for the potential cafe and, and, and other visitors.
Yeah, right now they're being used for all-day parking by, um, not commuters, but for, uh, employees, so, um, they are meant to be, uh, visitor parking. So, I know there was a request to do a two-hour, I think we, you know, we start at four, which is what our usual is, and we'll see if that, uh, resolves the problem, and there's enough turnover that, um, people have that opportunity to, to use those spaces. But right now, they're being used for, you know, up to eight, nine hours a day for, um, employees or possibly commuters, but I think mostly employees.
Um, just a quick question, so this. We just voted on something that we would give access to people to be able to park for business, employees basically parking, using our street parking. But we want to take that option away with this. I'm just confused for.
Well, I think this, this is a different area. You're in retail. There's a retail establishments there, so they're meant to provide retail parking, uh.
Yeah, okay, so the, the, um, it's a section there right across, right next to, um.
Across from AU. Yeah, adjacent to the new two, uh, historic buildings. So it's brand new park.
Yeah, do we, do we know what the residents' feedback was?
There are no residents there.
Along St. Paul?
Not, not on that side of Metropolitan.
This is a strictly commercial area.
Yeah, but, and maybe I could just clarify and, and ask that the resolution be clarified. Um, because Connor, I think you're a ten five hundred block of St. Paul Street. Up to Plyers Mill, and so I, I think we want to clarify the resolution to say that the ten five hundred block south of Metropolitan Avenue. Cause I don't want to be messing with the two-hour spots at the park.
Yeah, sorry, this is definitely for the, um, for the garage, the cafe garage across from AU carpet.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, it has nothing to do with the residential, I mean, parking areas.
This clarifies, thank you.
Yeah, sorry. So what is the amended?
We just add south of Metropolitan Avenue after ten five hundred block of
Okay.
St. Paul Street.
Alright, we got it.
Okay, uh, is there any other questions from the council?
This is one of those, I don't know if I'm introducing new things, right? One, I support it. Uh, you, I mean, I walk past there numerous times a day, and it is, it's just, it is incredibly overcrowded, but also the need to turn over, you know, guests, you know, people shopping, farmer's market, visitors to Solera, to Modena. Um, I think signing it makes total sense. Um, I also think that particular block of St. Paul has some real problems with pedestrian safety. Um, unfortunately, the design of AU's building, where their garage is and where the, the, the crosswalks were put in when that section was improved, they just, they park in the middle of the, there is a, a sidewalk and two sidewalk aprons that go across their driveway, but they park there every day, all day and all night, rendering the, the two ADA aprons unusable. They also park along the, the south side of their building within the parking lot area, and it creates a huge sightline problem, again, on the sidewalk, but also for cars trying to enter into the parking lot, because you can enter and exit at that point. We don't have one-way traffic, right? Going through the parking lot, you can actually exit out that way, and I've seen more near misses than, I want to tell you, because you're coming around a van and nobody sees you. They have no idea that you're there. Um, so I realize maybe this is introducing a new topic in there, but I, I do think we need to address either enforcement and signage, you know, or, you know, what are allowable parking and striping, um, because it's just, it's not safe. Um, and now that you're gonna have, we're introducing more vehicles, right? We've improved this, the structure. These parking spaces, which are, are, um, for pull-in spots, those cars are now gonna be, you know, backing out or pulling out of those spots, creating a more activated but confusing area. And right now pedestrians have to move, walk in the street to go around AU's vans, and I think it's just creating a danger zone. So, I, long ways, yes, I'm in support of signing it and restricting it and enforcing it, but the other side, the east side of St. Paul, where AU is, needs to be addressed as well.
Okay, well, I don't think, I mean, we can't address that tonight, in the sense, we'll need to have maybe, uh, Joe can look at that area and, um, see what kind of improvements we can make, um. Um, it's very difficult when you have these driveway aprons, uh, as, also as a sidewalk. Um, I know that's, uh, a tricky thing, but they should, definitely shouldn't be doing things, you know, in our parking lot behind their building. So although, um, I believe they have a couple of spaces that are theirs, is that actually on their property, Matt?
I think they have a couple of spaces that are on their property. We signed an agreement with them that they could use, um, our lot to meet their requirements with the county zoning. I, for some reason, I, I know there's one space that they have that, that might be where the dumpster is now. But I know there's some issues over there. Um, I'll have, um, Joe Kuchar go over there and see if he can make any recommendations for us. We'll probably need to include the state too, because it's actually their return and intersection.
Okay, but I don't think, uh, Connor's concerns really have much to do or anything to do with this particular resolution.
No, I just, the opportunity to talk about that block.
Okay, alright, well, I think, uh, so I think we can go ahead and move forward with the resolution if everyone's in agreement um, to the seven to five, Monday through Friday, four-hour parking. And then, uh, we'll look at addressing the other issues, because I, I, I have been over there and, and seen that and experienced it. And, um, so, uh, you know, it was one of those things during construction, you just kind of let it slide, but I think now that it's done, we need to address it. So, could I get a motion? Oh, is there any other, anybody else?
Yeah, I'm you, Tracy.
I'm sorry, and I don't see any, um, hands from the audience, so we can get a motion?
I move that, uh, uh, we pass resolution number R dash zero three dash twenty twenty-two establishing four-hour parking along the ten five hundred block of St. Paul Street, south of Metropolitan Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, was that the last thing on our agenda? And it's not even ten o'clock. Wow. How time flies, flies. Alright, I just need a, a motion to adjourn. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, alright, thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening.
Thanks, everyone.